All right, welcome to the Town Act and Plan in Board Meeting for December 1st, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Uh, we'll all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Um, you guys tabled some minutes last week, are you?
Yeah, October 20th. Chris, did you got a change from okay?
Yeah, briefly.
October 20th?
Yeah, briefly.
I, I've got a few changes if you want to. On fourth, page four.
Yep.
The sentence that says section 1.8 should simply say section 1.8 is to be struck from the plan.
This section is to be struck by, from the plan?
Yep.
Instead of from the permit?
I didn't review these, I just kind of passed them on to you guys, I apologize. Section is to be. Okay?
Then further below that where it says page six.
Yep.
Uh, after the board questioned if it was a significant habitat, I mean that, that could probably be struck, but you're, what needs to be added is the original analysis showed the pool as an SVP. The board asked to see the revised submission showing why the determination changed.
Okay.
On the next page, stakes and flags, um, I think 50 feet apart, I think we, uh, said around the limits of the excavation area to be opened and around the processing area. Did we not?
I think the stake, I think you had asked for the stakes to be 50 feet apart so they were visual.
Yeah, but it.
We're just specifying where.
Where. I don't think we came to any agreement on the off-site materials below there. However, the sentence, it says the ordinance relating to this matter is not directly related. Could it be eliminated from the manual? Just strike that sentence, it doesn't belong in the minutes. I think it's, it's going to be further discussion, but at that meeting, we didn't agree that all the off-site materials, uh, could be brought on-site. In particular, the re, the concrete with re-borrow. On the next page, the, in the middle of the page, it says a sequence of operations would be, that makes no sense. You just might as well strike that.
Where are we?
Uh, page.
I'm not like on the right page, I'm just wondering where you are.
The middle of the page where it says a sequence of operations would be.
Uh, maybe I'm on the next, from the page on.
Oh, okay.
Bullet comments.
Right there.
They have reclaiming as the second event, it's just, it's not right.
So you're, you're proposing striking the four bulleted items as well?
Yeah. You slayed it out pretty good in the revised ops plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, then when we're discussing about, uh, the water level, uh, we had discussed adding monitoring pipes.
Yeah, PVC pipes.
Yeah. So at the top, uh, maybe just an additional sentences that, that says monitoring PVC pipes will be added to monitor the depth. That's what I had.
What I'll do with these is I'll, I'll revise and give them back to you, so that you have, you know. You want to do it that way?
Yeah.
We can review it again.
Because there's some, there's some significant changes in there, it's not just a misspelled word.
Yeah.
So let me, let me spend some time with them and, and David.
Review.
Even review the tape again too, make sure we got everything.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. You just tabled, they already tabled, Chris, you don't, I don't think you need to.
I make a motion, we tabled the meeting minutes from October 20th until this meeting.
Second, all on table. Everybody again.
Quick, quick, um, sorry, short. No, easy.
Does he?
Yeah.
Oh, it's different, right? The beard.
He grew facial hair. You know, it's getting to be winter time.
Right, all right, next up, Camp East Shore Drive LLC, 14 East Shore Drive, 147-048, application for conditional use for Camp Keta.
Good evening, Craig Burgess with Sebago Technics, so at the last meeting on this project, we did get a favorable vote on this project, but there were eight conditions that we needed to address, and I just wanted to skim through those conditions and just to discuss how we generally complied with each of them. So the lighting plan was provided, it was at the, um, the back of the plan set that was provided. There are a mixture of some light poles as well as some ground lighting, but overall the lighting, the illumination levels stay within the property limits. The large trees, we, we added some notes saying that, um, in some of these larger, these recreational spaces, that the, the tree, the, the person responsible for doing the tree clearing would coordinate with the owner, Camp Keta, on potential saving of some of the trees. Um, we added the 50-foot buffer here along, at this location, immediately adjacent to the Camp Keta project. We added some notes on the plans for the operational hours as well as the installation of signs for access by permission only. A signature block was added, um, at the bottom here. I did, I did see today that that should have said approved Town of Act and Plan in Board. I did revise that plan here, and I also added those conditions onto that plan. However, just a minute ago, I, I remembered that before the planning board signs this plan, um, it needs to be, have an original signature, and I realize that this is a kind of a scanned signature, so I'm going to have to resubmit this plan with my original signature so that it can be properly recorded. The registry will not allow a, a scanned signature like that, so I'm going to have to have it for the next meeting unfortunately, but I'll make sure that Jason gets it, um, this week or early next week with an original.
Because it says approval v. approved?
No, it's, it's because that signature right there is not, it, it needs to be like, have like an original signature, so I actually need to sign it, which in a lot of the case with plant production, sometimes that gets missed, and I realized it was missed here too, so I'll, I'll get the planning board a revised overall site plan with an original signature so that it can be signed by the board and properly recorded. I just don't want to have the board sign something and then have it denied at the registry.
Right.
And then we did check the national and the, the main registry for large trees, and there was nothing within this general area, so, um, I think at this point, I think we've met the conditions, um, and I did want to point out a couple changes in addition to the changes, in addition to the conditions. So, I don't know if you can go back to the other plan, I think at the, yeah, there you go. So, after our last meeting, we've had some additional coordination with the architect on the community building, and they've decided to have propane tanks out there, so there needs to be access to those propane tanks. So we had to widen this sidewalk here to be full 10 feet so that it could accommodate a vehicle, in addition to making it kind of like a, a more, uh, thick section so that it could accommodate a vehicle, so that did add a little bit of impervious area to the project as well as a turnaround area right there. So the, the intent would be that the, the propane delivery truck could back up and, and turn around in this area. I did run a full turning movement to make sure that this, this walkway can accommodate it, and, and that's why we had to widen it to the 10 feet as well as, um, throw in a, a bigger radius right at this portion here. But that was a change that we made to the project. Overall, the amount of impervious stays below one acre. But in order to do that, we did have to remove a walkway, a proposed walkway that was going up through here from the community building, it was coming up here and it was going up through here. We did remove that, it was a little bit of additional impervious area that we were able to save, um, but we do stay just below one acre of, of new impervious surface with this. So, um, and also the other change was just the addition of two 120-gallon propane tanks right at the community building. So, um, with that, I'm here to answer any comments that the board may have, but that was the, the, the most substantial change since the last meeting.
So it's really a road, it's not a sidewalk?
It's gonna, it's gonna be, um, it's not going to be used as a road except for the.
Delivery.
Delivery of the propane, and also every five, 10, even five, 10 years, whenever that, there's two septic tanks and, and a grease oil sep, separated right over here, so those will need to be serviced every so often. So, it's really just to get that vehicle back there, that, that road will only be used a handful of times per year, maybe not even three times per year.
Yeah, when you, you're only going to be there for a week or two at a time.
Correct.
So you won't go through two bottles of propane in a week, I wouldn't.
Yeah, it's just very infrequent trips that are needed to get back there. Unfortunately, that was something that the architect brought up, and they really felt like we, they needed to get some access back there.
What about fire? The road?
The additional amount of tree clearing for that, make, to make that a little bit wider is, was very minimal.
I think with regard to the tree, tree clear, tree clearing and, um, looking into the, uh, registry, I think I was suggesting more that you investigate any candidates that might be put forth for that registry rather than just looking to see if anything was registered. That's, that's what I was suggesting when I proposed that.
Okay. So you're thinking about having like an arborist go out to the site?
I don't, I think you could do it. That's what I was saying, you could get on the site and you just measure the diameter and you estimate the, the height of it, and I'm sure you have at least one.
Okay.
Yeah, big trees up there.
Yeah.
We can, we can do that and report back to, to Jason if that works, and then Jason could give a summary at one of the meetings just to.
Thank you.
But with that, I'm, we're, we're just looking for, I guess, if, if approval with the conditions. I know that Camp Keta, they have already brought on Consigly to, to, for the construction, they're going to move through the winter on this, so they're gearing up, and they should be before Jason soon to apply for a building permit.
Would it be appropriate for you to sign, just to expedite things, right over your signature or beside your signature so that it?
I was thinking that.
Your signature could just be on there instead of going another week? I don't know how everybody thinks about that, but seems reasonable to me that they would accept that at the registry.
I don't know what the registry would do.
Yeah. I know that they're very picky, and when I bring in a plan, they hold up the plan to the light to make sure that it's an original signature. I don't know if the board reconvenes or comes in through the town office, I could certainly have it tomorrow here, um, but, or, I, I, I believe that Camp Keta could probably wait until the 17th, I believe, 15th. Yeah, I don't think that should hold up things, I knew, I do know that Consigly is preparing the building permit application though.
No, if it works for you, I mean, it works for us, right?
Yeah. I told, I was, I was in a rush trying to prepare these and get these out before I scooted out for some meetings today, and I totally forgot about that.
So in two weeks, that's all we do is we'd sign it?
Right.
Well, we might vote at that time too, when we can read the conditions thoroughly on the, you know.
Yeah, I have the plans here with the conditions listed right out on the plans now, on this plan. I know on the, the plan that you have in front of you, the, the condition, conditions of approval were not on that plan, but this plan now has it.
What do you guys want to do?
I hate having to sign over it, like.
Yeah.
I don't think I have to because I'm bad.
Yeah, but it'd be safe, if, if two weeks works for you guys, then we'll do it in two weeks.
I can have plans to Jason next week, and then, um, once the board signs it, we can pick it up and record it right at the registry, if that works.
Who voted on this project?
Uh, hasn't voted yet, no, because they were, they were making a couple revisions on it, so that, that's what they were just saying about, asking about, he wanted to see if the board could vote on it right now.
You could vote on it tonight and just sign it at some point.
I thought you voted on it the meeting I was in here.
Well, he. To approve with conditions, and these are.
And then these are the conditions that he brought in, yeah, so I guess it is approved.
Well, we'd either, we either take the time to review those paper documents tonight or at our leisure and then come back and sign it, or just review them at the next meeting.
I can, I can give these tonight to Jason if you want to review it, there's really no major changes to it except adding the conditions, and then I also, um, just so you know, if you, Jason, if you could hold it right there, these are butter labels down in this corner, I noticed they weren't properly shown to the right lot, so I just added some callouts to that to, to make it a little bit more clear, to where those butter labels should be pointed to. So that was just a, a minor, minor change as well, but, um, I can leave the plans here tonight and plan on getting them to the town early next week and having them signed at the next meeting.
Sure, yeah, we'll take those and then I can review it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I don't know if there's any, um, more action that's needed, I know that the board had voted on it with conditions, but, um, I did want to take tonight as an opportunity to also just discuss those changes that were made.
So you will not be present at the next one when we sign it, is what you're hoping, which is, what you're thinking?
Yeah, so if the planning board were to sign it, I could, I could, um.
So I, I feel that if, we should just at least go over the conditions now, if he's not going to come and he's just going to sign it, then, because if some change needs to be made, then.
Right, right.
I don't want, be like, hey, we need you to do this again.
Yeah.
So if you bear, bear with us for a few minutes, let's just go over this.
Sure.
Just quickly. Yeah, I just don't want.
Aren't they on the screen?
Yeah.
Are they on the screen or no?
Yeah, they are.
On the signature page, didn't you end up?
No, the conditions are not on that sheet, they're on this revised sheet here, but the conditions were pretty much what I, what I read as part of my introduction. I believe just the last one that, I believe the last one that just needs to be fully addressed is the question about the trees.
Whoops, it's two there.
Yeah.
Good, I have one. There's two there, Gavin.
Right.
Do you want, want to just, you're like, I'm pretty familiar with this.
So the conditions are on the, the top right, next to the general notes. Pretty much what I had just stated, um, I took what Jason sent me last and just reworded it just a little bit, but it's pretty, pretty much, I believe, what we discussed at the last meeting.
Did we come up with any idea of how often they might rent the place out?
Yeah, so one of, the, the note on there.
Four I was looking at, at the top.
So, um, note 35 should talk about that. No, general note 35. Unless, if, I can also revise that particular note to state what.
I was just curious, I don't think.
I don't see a 35.
Sticking point, I was just.
Got a typo.
We were talking about use, you know, the three weeks and then.
They estimate throughout the year 30 to 50 times for purposes such as training, nature, education groups, recreation wellness groups, supportive gatherings, retreats, and seminars.
30 to 50 times for a single day or a weekend or?
Yeah, single day.
Be on a weekend.
Yeah.
Single day, okay, so 30 to 50 times.
Oh, I see it's number 11.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, note 11, yeah.
Yeah.
I was looking for, you said 34, 35, I'm like, what are you?
I guess they're, yeah, note 11 on sheet four, sorry. Yeah, sheet two was our notes and legends sheet, so it was also added to that sheet, sorry for the confusion there.
Why'd you put the turnaround where you did and not closer to the building?
Way too much impact, yeah, it comes down to, it really came down to the amount of tree clearing needed. As you start to get closer to the building, the slopes start to get a little bit steeper, so it would have just had way too much impact, too much grading, too, too much tree clearing, so, um, I think it will work where it is, and it allows at least for them to turn around there and back up a little bit if needed.
Is that wide enough for emergency services to get to the dining hall?
Yeah. So I, on, on that 10-foot wide walkway, I did run, um, a turning movement, which is like a box truck, so a box, a box truck could get back there, so.
Which you might want for food deliveries in the future anyway, or if people are renting in, they want a caterer, I mean, you know, gives you options anyway.
Yeah. Really, the intent, the intent was, it was really just for the, the septic maintenance and for the propane, but, and, and I know that the Camp Keta will have a side-by-side, which they originally intended for food delivery, yeah.
Are you going to still have the dumpster over?
Yeah.
Over there?
Yeah, so yeah, that, that temporary dumpster will be right there. So if the board is all set with how we've addressed it, I can have, I can have plans with my original signature for the next meeting for, for you to sign.
How does everyone feel about the changes?
It's paper time.
All right, I'll make a motion, we approve the final application for Camp East Shore Drive, Camp Keta, 14 East Shore Drive, with the changes.
One second.
All on table. All closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, appreciate it.
All right, here we go. Next up, uh, David Peppin, mineral extraction H Road 222-0-007 and West Shore Drive 221-003, application for mineral extraction.
Good evening, everybody, how are you guys?
Good.
So I'm back, um, written you guys a nice cover letter, um, tried to talk about all the changes that we made since the last time we were here. As you would recall, we had one meeting where we talked all about the, we went through the operations manual, that was the last meeting, um, and then the meeting before that, we went through the North Star engineering review, um, so we went ahead and I was taking, we took as many notes as we could during those two meetings and went ahead and made a lot of changes based on the comments that we made, um, so I've got, kind of spelt out those changes here in this letter that I provided, and, uh, would probably like to go over those with, with everybody. We've also submitted some more documentation kind of along the way, um, we have a site distance verification letter that we got in from Corner Post Land Surveying, uh, now that some of the trees were trimmed along the H Road, we've verified that the site distance has been reached at the entrance location. We've got a traffic impact and safety analysis, um, that was done by Diane Morabito, who's a professional traffic engineer, and we've provided her report for everybody to take a look at, um, she had some recommendations about signage particularly, um, approaching the gravel pit from both directions, and we've added that signage to the plans, um, based on Diane's recommendations, um, so we could talk more about that. We've got a revised operations manual, we've got revised site plans and reclamation plans, we submitted, um, evidence of insurance for our company, which I believe was a requirement. We submitted evidence of insurance for our company, which I believe was a requirement, just to show that we are in insured business. And we did submit one permit by rule for, at the request of the board, we submitted one permit by rule for the vernal pool development, which was in extraction area number one, which is along the H Road. There was actually, if you remember, there was actually two vernal pools right there and we were trying to get twenty-five percent development in both of those. So we submitted a copy of the permit by rule application for that. We have not yet submitted a copy of the permit by rule application for the drainage around the maintenance garage. That was the second permit by rule that we needed to do. And Kyle at Saint Germain is working on that and we should have a copy of that over for you guys soon. When you submit those, it will take some time to hear back from the state. So we'll have to be a little patient there. And we've also submitted just an email that was sent to us from Tom Tetrow at StanTech Engineering. And there were some questions about how his report wasn't lining up. I think, like, his report wasn't quite lining up with what we saw from the, on the plans as far as that vernal pool along the H Road. We were talking about that vernal pool, how that vernal pool was man-made. As we were understanding, it was man-made. And Thomas Tetrow provided kind of an email clarification to that regard.
Matt, we were looking for what you told the state. Because what initially went to the state in the original report called it a significant vernal pool. And it was, whatever the exact term was, it was both man-made and natural. And that was what was checked. And the state came back and said it wasn't. So there was some communication with the state and that's what we're looking for.
Okay, some correspondence with the state that we were missing there? Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah. Why would the state have not gone with the professionals' opinion that it was an SVP?
Sometimes you have a state map which shows like vernal pool, it'll identify vernal pools, but you actually get out and do like a field study and on the ground and a different determination can be made. I've seen that in the past. But I would probably have to defer this question to Kyle, who would be able to answer this better for me.
I just want to see, you know...
Yeah.
In my opinion, now maybe they just made that determination on their own, but...
Right. No, I understand.
I would think if the professionals said, hey, it's an SVP, they would not change, agree with that or change that without some rationale to do it.
I agree, yeah. I'm being told by Kyle and, you know, the engineers that they think it was man-made. Thomas Tetrow is an environmental scientist with StanTech and he made, you know, he sort of made that determination. So Kyle's basing his information off of...
But not originally. That's my point. Originally, he said it was both man-made and natural. There's a term for it and that's, that's what went to the state in your submission.
So we need to look into that then.
Natural modified is what it's called.
Natural modified. All right. I can get a response for you on that, like, within a day or two, just to get a clarification on that. Whether we need, we need to send this report to the state to have them change their determination.
Well, they can't, you gave us last time, they responded and said it wasn't.
Right.
Yeah.
My question is, there's a disconnect there. Your professionals said it was an SVP. The state came back and said it wasn't. Why? Was there further communication to the state?
You're saying that my professionals said it was a significant...
Yes, in your own report. We've gone over this three times.
Yeah, but that determination was changed by...
Not with what went, this is what went to the state. Unless you're telling me this isn't what went to the state.
And the state's saying that it's not a significant vernal pool.
That's what you gave us.
Right.
Okay.
At the last meeting, their report. So there's just a disconnect in my mind.
Okay.
Your guy said it was and then the state said it wasn't.
I don't think it's too big of a deal then. If the state's saying it's not, then it clearly isn't.
No, but I would like to see what changed their mind. Was there an additional submission from your StanTech guy to the state? And if so, what did it say? That's all, I just want to see what it said.
Sure, yeah. More than willing to find out. I'm not privy to the entire, all the conversations, but I'm going along with what I'm being told by these engineers, so...
Your engineers said SVP at the beginning.
Correct. But, you know, I think he, I think there was at some point where he went out there and you could, made another determination looking at it, that this was clearly, you can tell it's an excavated area when you walk over there. You can tell that there's an old banking that was right there. And what I was told was that they dug out that area to help build the H Road way back in the day. And just walking around there, you can tell that it was an area, like, the way that the banking slope like this, like, that they were digging into this banking at some point in time. And I think it maybe just took a little while for that determination to be made, but...
Well, he called it natural modified, meaning there was some digging there going on.
Yeah.
I just want to know what went to the state.
Okay.
I would assume the state would have bought what StanTech said in the original submission.
So we want StanTech to, we want the information that StanTech sent to the state of Maine?
Yeah, after the original report, which called it an SVP.
Okay.
So in other words, would it be fair to say, I think based on the board's experience, you, when fieldwork is done to say something is a significant vernal pool, there must be some rationale that the state would use to say, no, it's not. Because they're usually not going out in the field, so whatever that rationale was, I mean, it's clear that the state's saying it's not significant and I think the board is looking to understand.
How did the state come to that determination if we had an expert in the field saying otherwise?
Saying otherwise?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. How did they figure it out?
Just by looking at a map, sure how that happened. Well, I can certainly provide that. And I'm going to leave it at your discretion at this point. I just went through the list of things that I've submitted. I've got a list, I've got two things here. I've got a list of changes that we made that I'd like to go over with everybody. And I also have some remaining points of conversation I think need to be had that I've listed here as well. Where do you guys want to start with that?
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think the other thing, as we get ready to dive into the submission in more detail, is a reminder to the board that this application has not been found complete yet. And I think that all of the work that we've spent the last two meetings where we reviewed this and the additional information that the applicants brought back is in pursuit of making a determination of completeness and then whether and when to schedule a public hearing. So I think in fairness to the process and keeping the project moving, if the board at the end of this discussion finds that they've got enough information related to the conditional use, that the application can be found complete, that's the next procedural step and then talking about a public hearing from there.
I'm really hoping we can get there tonight and I, the way I, I'm seeing it is that there's a lot of minor, small hurdles here that need to be crossed, but there's nothing major at this point. We've really gone through this pretty thoroughly in my eyes. If you want me to start off with quickly going through the changes that we made based on previous meetings, I can do that. So we can talk about those quickly?
Yeah, the one through nineteen.
One through, yes.
Let's go through and then, then one through fourteen.
I've got a list of changes here that were made to the operations manual and another list of changes that were made to the site plan.
Yeah. Might as well go through what you have.
All right. So I'm going to kind of abbreviate these and I won't, I won't read them word for word, but number one, just went through and erased R. Peppin &amp; Sons from the document. The applicant is David J. Peppin Gravel LLC. I thought that should be clear. So that is the applicant and the owner of these parcels of land. So the operations manual has been, there's no R. Peppin &amp; Sons in there anymore. It's just David J. Peppin Gravel. Number two, put a note in the operations manual that the operator will be responsible for performing tree trimming along H Road to maintain site distance at all times. Kyle also put a note on his plans that said the same thing. Number three, specify that the operator would be responsible for putting metal stakes every fifty feet around the extraction areas and flagging every fifty feet around the processing and wash plant area. Number four, added language that specified essentially if we're digging out there and we run into any archaeological remains or archaeological artifacts, that we'll stop immediately. We'll take action as necessary to notify the appropriate authorities, including the Maine Historic Preservation Commission. That was a request of the board's, that we put that in there, so we did that. Specified in section three-point-three that we will perform an acceptable form of performance guarantee. We talked with the board last time and I think we came to an agreement that six thousand dollars an acre seemed like a pretty reasonable number. Maybe that, there's more discussion there, but the DEP does about four thousand an acre. And I kind of thought at the last meeting that there was some consensus that six thousand an acre would be a good number to use. So we put that number into section three-point-three. Section one-point-six, we have specified that Three Rivers Land Trust will be the only entity permitted to use the right-of-way. We have spelled out that the right-of-way will enter where the red gate is located on the H Road. This location is shown on the plans and there's a note that specifies that this right-of-way is intended for the use of Three Rivers Land Trust only. And there is a provision in the operations manual that says that the land trust will have a locked gate as well, just to remind board members. Section one-point-eight of the operations manual was removed. That was some kind of wishy-washy language that said that if the town altered our approval in the future, that we could kind of change some things on our own. All that language has been taken out. This operations manual is a operations manual and that's it. Section two-point-one, we said Saturday work would end at twelve o'clock instead of two o'clock, something we had talked about with you guys. Said that from six to six-thirty, onsite equipment maintenance can take place along with snow plowing and other site preparation. Specified that Peppin-owned trucks can get loaded between six-thirty and seven, but all other trucks cannot enter until seven o'clock. Number nine, specify that no traffic will be allowed to enter or exit the site on Labor Day, Memorial Day weekend, or Saturdays and Sundays on those two busy weekends. And we talked about the transfer station has a mile-long parade of traffic. Ten, we said that no concrete with rebar would be brought to the site. We would still like to bring, well, we talked about this with the board. We would still like to be able to bring concrete to the site. And we think that we, there was some expressed concern, I think, from maybe Gavin that just wanted the concrete to come from our operations. We are hoping to be able to bring concrete onto the site from anywhere, as long as it doesn't have rebar in it. It's not like there's a lot of waste concrete that's generated in this area, but if somebody wants a place where they can dispose of that and we can crush it up and turn it into crushed gravel, kind of think it's a reasonable request. But we did remove, you know, any concrete with rebar. And we also removed importing stumps, which I thought was pretty big. We're not going to be bringing any stumps onto the site. We're not going to be burying any stumps on the site. DEP will allow you to bury up to an acre's worth of stumps, but we are not doing that and we're not going to import any stumps. But we are hoping to be able to bring concrete and asphalt with no rebar in, just to be able to process that and make like crushed gravel or something like that. Number eleven, we specified that silt, clay, and loom can be brought into the site for the purpose of reclamation from the operator's operations only. It can only come from our operations, it can't just come from anywhere. These materials may be brought in from elsewhere, but the materials that are brought in from elsewhere can only be located in the processing area. So it was a clarification that materials that are used to reclaim the gravel pit will only, if we have to bring in extra materials to help supplement reclamation, they would only come from our facilities where we have loom or we have silt or clay that we can use, that we know is clean, from a clean source. And we did add something here, I think in number thirteen, that all topsoil that's generated from the site will stay on the site. So no topsoil that is dug up when we're getting ready, when we're opening up the site will be screened or sold. It's all going to stay there for reclamation. Section two-point-five specified that we would not use grinding solely for reclamation, but that we would mix them to supplement reclamation materials only. So there was some concern that we would just throw down grindings and take off, but we can use those as like erosion control, but we can also use those to kind of stabilize bankings, but we'd have to do that along with grass or some sort of vegetative growth media. Number fourteen, we put a ten-foot tall berm along West Shore Drive, a minimum of ten feet along West Shore Drive, and that is shown on the plans as well. Number fifteen, we clarified information about the wash plant and put a five-foot fence along all constructed ponds, where the, all the wash ponds, on the plans, you'll see there's a five-foot fence that's around those ponds. Showed a plan, a well on the plans. And also two PVC pezo-meters, which are basically just PVC pipes that will go into the ground. And we'll use those pipes to monitor the groundwater level height near those ponds. I think Gavin was a little, and there was a little bit of concern about digging too low when we were dredging the ponds out and, you know, getting down lower than we should. So the solution we had come up with was to put these pezo-meters around the ponds and use those to monitor the water level, especially in the spring, when the groundwater levels will be higher, to really have an accurate representation right there of, you know, where the groundwater table level is. So there was a lot of work around that wash plant area to kind of show all this on the plans and kind of specify this better in the operations manual. Number sixteen, we removed the word "bridge" and replaced it with the word "culvert." Number seventeen, added the latest revision date to the operations manual on all the pages. Number eighteen, we have shown in our reclamation plan that we're going to do a twenty-by-twenty grid of native pine tree species on the slopes that are along West Shore Drive and the slopes that are along the H Road, which will rejuvenate some of the vegetative buffer over time. Gavin had specified that he wanted to make sure the word "native" was in the operations manual, so we were sure that we use the word "native pine species." And we think it's going to be good to kind of create some sort of vegetative grid. You know, these will be saplings, it'll take time for them to grow, but we want to plant them on the slopes along these two roadways. Section four-point-three, we removed the last paragraph, which talked about requirements of a new operator, which is something we had discussed. So then these are kind of notes about some of the things that Kyle had done on the plans. He couldn't make it tonight. A lot of this stuff is, I just kind of talked about, so I'm going to skip through it. But he showed a, he showed a well located at the wash plant and at the maintenance garage, which was a request. He showed stop signs at the intersection of all trailheads. And he provided a note that Three Rivers, on the Three Rivers Land Trust trail, that the trail location may be moved by the operator or discontinued at any time. He provided a note on the snowmobile trail that said the same, that the trail may be moved by the operator or discontinued at the operator's discretion, but did show that stop signs must be provided at the intersection of all trailheads, you know, in the gravel pit location. Showed a dumpster on the plans located on a concrete pad near the maintenance garage. Showed a dumpster on the plans located on a concrete pad near the maintenance garage. Labeled the wash plant area, the processing and wash plant area. Showed a minimum of a 10-foot berm along West Shore Drive. Specified on plans that we will utilize an onsite culvert and not a bridge. Added latest revision date to the plans. Showed the reclamation grid along the two roads I was just talking about. Provided some extra signage along H Road in accordance with Diane's memo. Added notes to the plan that requires tree trimming along the H Road. Identified jersey barriers or bollards at the fuel tank to protect the tank. And moved the roadway which travels near the maintenance garage, there was the roadway that went through the resource protection area. He moved that roadway over so that it's no longer in the resource protection area. He did not move the roadway that travels from where the maintenance garage is over to the extraction area along H Road. I thought that that was kind of worth some further discussion because we walked that trail together when we were out there. I think the least minimal impact would probably be just to improve that trail rather than trying to move the roadway over into what we're seeing is like a vernal pool slash wetland area and filling in, you know, probably causing more harm than good. So that's a little bit open for discussion, but these were the majority of the, or the bulk of the changes that we made for this submission.
Matt, number 12.
Is that for the operations manual?
From the first section that you went through.
Yep.
Can you define grindings or ground vegetative debris? My question is, how does that relate to stumps?
That would be if you take your stumps on site and you grind them to make like an erosion control mixture, which is what, you kind of have two options with stumps on site, is you can either burn them or you can grind them up into like erosion control. So we would grind them up on site, and we would use that vegetative debris or mulch, I guess. We'd use it for erosion control if there's like washouts in certain areas, and then we'd also use it, a lot of people do use it to supplement reclamation, where you'd kind of like essentially spread it on a slope to kind of help stabilize things and also provide some organic matter that's going to decompose over time.
I think she was looking for clarification. What is ground, what are you referring to ground vegetative debris? We understand what grindings are, but what is ground vegetative debris?
That's, I guess I think of those things as the same thing.
Because you had grindings or ground vegetative, you had two different things there.
Oh, okay.
You had grindings or ground vegetative debris. So she's, I think she's trying to figure out what you're talking about.
I consider those the same thing, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just asking for clarification because, you know, it applies to grinding stumps, and that's what we were talking about in the previous, like number 10, that no stumps will be buried, no stumps will be imported.
Oh, it does say, yeah, or, okay.
Yeah, I think she was just looking for some clarification on what you meant by, what is, what is a?
I would, we can just call it grindings, I guess, if that makes more sense to everybody. It would just be, essentially it would just be stumps that we grind up on site.
Are you talking about like bushes?
Yeah.
That's your vegetative debris is like bushes, right?
And small trees.
Small, small, small trees that don't have big stumps.
Oh, right, okay. So we should probably...
Had to grind up in a little...
I just add the word stump. I mean, if, you know, if you were looking at this, stump grindings and ground vegetative debris, then it's, it's clear that the two are somewhat separate.
Stump grindings.
We might have them in the same pile for all I know.
Yeah, if you added the word stump grindings.
So...
That's fine.
With regard to that, Matt, will you have a grinder? Do you have your own grinder? Do you have somebody come in?
We don't. Those things are a nightmare. We'd probably hire somebody like Jeff Simpson to come in and grind them for us.
Have you, have you thought about how often you would want to grind? Are you going to collect all, collect all the stumps if you're having somebody come, I would imagine, and then have them all ground at once?
Yes, but you don't want to let them sit for too long either, so that they, I'd imagine there's a little bit of a shelf life, so it might be like every five years that you...
Do you know where I was going with that? Two-week limit that we had? Do you remember?
The other one?
Once a year.
Once a year, I think it was, yeah.
Once a year. But he's also importing, he's bringing stuff in. He's bringing in more than, he's just, he's just using what's on site. He's using what's on site. The other person she was on, was importing stumps.
Right.
So he's bringing stuff off from job sites that he's worked on. So he's got a more of an abundance of it.
Is that Seth? Seth brings stumps, yeah. Yeah, we're not, we don't, we have no reason to import stumps onto the site. We're not an earthwork company, that it really doesn't suit us.
Need to align work.
And, yeah, there's not really any money in, you know, grinding up stumps. It's the, the equipment that you use requires a crazy, a lot of maintenance, and it's not, it's not cheap to have the work done.
The stuff you're talking, ground vegetation debris is like going down to Renton Center and getting one of those grinders that the state uses along the roads.
Yeah.
For branches and small debris, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mix a little bit of mulch.
So should change the language, stump grindings and ground vegetative debris.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Do we have any other questions about some of the changes?
It's not more of a question, but more of a side note, like when you're doing your dredging, I'd like to be notified about that so that we can make sure that we're not, you know, because right now I have zero way to know if you guys are below that five, five foot, you know, so when you're doing the dredging, to ensure that we're not going below the water table, I would like, my office would like to be notified.
Okay.
So that I can come down and verify that we're at a certain level.
We could certainly do that, yeah.
I mean, I don't find that to be out of order, out of, you know, request, so.
That wouldn't be a problem, and I did want to kind of speak to that, the washing and processing area. We don't want to make that like a extraction area, like in the DEP's eyes. We don't want to go in there and take material out of that area. We want to leave all the material right there. We just want to use that as a platform for having the wash plant and being able to run the crusher right there. You know, it's, like I've said, it's centrally located, so it's kind of away from everything. But maybe that might, it might warrant a little bit further discussion, like I still think that even though we're not taking materials out of there, that we, you know, we're definitely going to have to reclaim that, so we're still going to have to have a reclamation bond with the town for that. I don't think we would need to have a reclamation bond with the state for that because it's not mineral extraction, but we might, I'm going to have to look into this a little bit more, we might have to have a stormwater permit by rule for that area since it's, yeah. It will be internally drained, I can assure you that, but we're not, it should give everybody a little bit of peace of mind that we're not, my intent is not to excavate that down to five feet and then put these ponds in. My intent is just to flatten that area out. I think I'll probably be 10 or 15 feet above the water table and put those ponds in. So 100%, we're not, I'm not trying to take materials out of this area. I'm just trying to use this as a working area, so.
But you still haven't applied for a DEP permit by rule of stormwater.
I have not for that yet, yeah.
Do you plan on doing that, or?
I wanted to have that conversation tonight, and I, I need to kind of talk to Kyle a little bit more about this, but I would, yes, I think that, I would say that we probably will plan on doing that, yeah. If it's, if it's required, then 100% we'll do it.
Yeah.
So that will be, when I talk about open acreage, like 35 acres is what we're requesting to have for open acreage.
They do it 35 or 40?
I have it as 35.
So we, okay.
Yeah.
I think we had 40 last time.
It's been all over the map, they've settled on 35.
I think we settled on 30, 35, yeah, the last meeting. But that, this area will also be included in that 35 acres, so.
Yeah, I think your plan is consistent with 35.
With 35?
Yeah.
On number eight, you have snowplowing and other site preparations. Are you talking like watering of the roads? What are you, what are we talking about?
Yeah, watering of the roads. A lot of times you just need to like drive a loader down the road to get to the screening plant, to check the fluids on the plant, and grease the plant before you get the day started. Just general maintenance stuff. I'm not talking about earth, you know, any earth moving, but just site prep, I guess. I could define that a little better, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Matt, but in the revised plan, you do say you, you would operate front-end and material handling, hauling, maintenance, and loading your trucks, but you also say excavators shall be permitted from 6:00 to 5:00. And excavators to me are digging, and you weren't digging until...
Oh, yeah.
7:00.
Um, it doesn't, okay, it doesn't specifically say excavators, but it doesn't not say excavators.
But revised plan does.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Okay. On the site plan?
You revised Ops.
Oh, the operations manual, okay.
Paragraph 2.1.
So do you want me to say no excavators until 7:00?
Yeah, I think you could just delete them there. In that first part where you're talking about the equipment that you will use, well, that's, actually, that's for the whole thing. I just think we, it has to be clear that you're not going to dig before 7:00.
Okay.
You know, the maintenance, the moving equipment, the loading of the trucks, your trucks, that's
Yeah, so I'll specify it would be more clear from 6:00 to 6:30, watering the roads, plowing, maintenance.
Yeah, because on the first part, you got front-end loaders, material handling equipment, and excavators shall be permitted to operate from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Okay. So let me take excavators out of there too, because that doesn't belong.
John, where were you? You were on the paragraph that says no activities related to the operations.
I was looking at the hours paragraph.
2.1.
2.1.
All right, I'm just reading down toward the bottom of the page. It says no activities related to the operations such as excavation of material, processing of material, or loading of trucks is allowed outside the timeframes established above, nor shall work on-site ever begin prior to 6:00 a.m. I thought it was 7:00.
Well, they can do what we just said before 7:00. They just can't excavate. That's why I say it's just going to be a little bit clearer. Maybe address 6:00 to 7:00 separately, and then, you know, 7:00 to 5:00.
I can certainly do that, yeah.
Yeah, maybe just, you may just want to make it like a list, you know, during, from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00, these are the vehicles that can operate.
Maintenance, maintenance and site prep.
Yeah, from 7:00 there on, nothing else, you know. Might be able to simplify that whole thing.
Okay. Yeah, it reads a little confusing.
Yeah.
I'm catching your drift.
Of course, you got just so many, so many different pieces of equipment, right?
Yeah.
So if you address each one in category, and what timeframe they can operate.
I'll make a table.
From, from my standpoint, I, I received the submission materials. I have not provided an updated memo with findings and conclusions related to conditional use because we just got it on Monday. But I, I think that, when we think about the difference between like, is the application complete and doesn't meet the standards of the ordinance? It seems to be complete, and I think that that's really, hopefully, the focus of this conversation is, you know, are there things that the boards asked for that aren't submitted yet? Or do we have everything and we just need more time to, you know, review it for the standards? I think if that's the case, then the board could, you know, make findings of completeness. So that's really where I think the focus should be. I think based on the last couple of meetings and my review, essentially over the last two days of this updated submission, is that it does seem to address all these things as far as completeness, but there, there's still obviously going to need to be some conversation about traffic and hours and those kinds of things.
Starting the eyes across with the tears.
We made a list last time of what was needed for completeness, and I think it'd be worthwhile, since you're there, Ben, is to just go through that. I mean, there are some details we still want to talk about, and you even have a list of them that we should talk about. But what we said last time for completeness was we needed the DEP permits requested for the two vernal pools, which you've done. We needed the DEP request for stormwater for the wash site and the building area. And those, you're going to have done.
Yeah.
What, what happened with the, we were provided with the application for the vernal pool. Did we get a response from, no, because it's a permit by rule.
Permit by rule.
They just submitted it just recently. When, you just submitted it the other day, right, Matt? The application?
Correct.
I think if we're provided, if they've requested, my opinion is, you know, then we're good. We're not going to prove it until we hear from the state, but we're good to say, you know, they've checked that block by going to get it.
Right.
Matt, are these PBRs the same as the ones that I deal with? Are they 14 days? Or do they give you more time, do they give the state more time to review them? Because when I deal with PBRs within the shoreline zone, I get, the state has 14 days to respond, and if they don't respond, then it's automatically granted. Do you know how this works with extraction?
Oh, I'm not 100% positive, to be honest. I, I know that the ones that you're dealing with are those, they're not...
So if you were to retain all within 75 feet of the water, you got to get a PBR.
Oh, okay.
It's just, it's, they're on different scales. So I wasn't sure if they had a more, more review than what I deal with.
I did, I did one a few years back, and I, as I recall, it's a vernal pool one, and it took us about 30 days to get a response. That was, that was three years ago. I know that the DEP has been pretty backed up.
They changed it because of COVID. When everything hit with that and the understaffing, I think a lot of things have changed within the state.
Yeah, it, I noticed the difference, just trying to get a hold of anybody at the state level, that it became more difficult.
It might behoove you to find out, because then if you're waiting two weeks and you haven't heard anything, and then it's automatic, you're done, right?
So the other things we were waiting on?
As far as mineral extraction.
Oh, I, I have no reservations about the, I think it'll be perfectly fine. We're not, we've got nothing to be worried about. It's just a matter of when we're going to get a response. And if you, there's something written too that says, right, if you don't get a response within a certain amount of time, then you're pretty much just...
That's what I mean.
Oh, that's what you're trying to say?
That may be, that may be behoove you to find that out.
Find that out.
If that's true, then...
Kyle would know what that time period is. I do not know off the top of my head.
The other things we wanted for... Um, the other things we wanted for completeness was a traffic study, which has been submitted, updated drawings, which I guess we got tonight. Uh, and then the ops plan needed to be revised cuz it couldn't have been accepted with language that was binding the town, and you've removed that language. So I think we're pretty close to being, and I'm gonna make that determination. I, I believe there's still some discussion to be had around the traffic study. And I haven't reviewed the updated drawings, but we have them, so. To your point, Ben, I think we're pretty close.
Let's get there.
Yep. Well, I went through this pretty quick on the traffic study. Oh, looks really good.
The frustrating thing for me in the traffic study
Is for the town to go out there and do something like striping the road.
You can't strike that road.
Does it meet the requirement? I don't think it meets the requirement.
It's not wide enough.
Yeah, same with it, yeah, well, that's the problem.
You gonna say, John?
The frustrating thing for me, so we've got the traffic study and, and you've checked the block, but we had specifically asked for the professional to give us a recommendation on H Road versus West Shore. And, and I know people have opinions and believe, you know, it's obvious, but we still wanted to have an engineer say what the answer is. Two-thirds or more of, of where excavating is along H Road. I mean, excuse me, West Shore Road. Um, we heard at previous town meetings, a lot of concern about H Road. So we wanted a professional opinion, and that wasn't addressed in the um, study that you provided.
Are you sure that wasn't addressed?
Yeah, it was only addressed for the H Road.
Only H Road.
Really?
So we're kinda missing half the report.
So
You had said she was gonna go back out. She couldn't do it because you said she was gonna go back out just to review, to look at it.
Thanksgiving came, wasn't it?
It, yeah. Second half of the study got taken over by Turkey.
Right.
She was supposed to go do that. That was uh, the intention or part of the objective of the study. So um, we can get her out there to do that and update this for sure.
Yeah, I, you know, I think we ought to rely on a professional instead of, you know,
Yeah.
our opinions.
I agree, yeah.
So with that said, we're not completing. You have that half hour report.
I mean, I would, I would argue
I would argue that we can.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think for a case like this
We're asking for revision.
But he's providing everything as we're coming in to whatever we ask.
Right, I, I think to the, the earlier point, has, has the box been checked? That, that's essentially what the finding of completeness is. And if, for example, if it's not done to the level that the board's looking for, or it doesn't include all of the information the board's looking for, that's, you know, kind of at the applicant's risk. But essentially, has enough information been submitted in order to the board, for the board to start making determinations around the standards and the ordinance? So I would say, in a case like this, yes, this is, has been submitted, but it, it, I think the applicant's hearing loud and clear that there's still some information about uh, West Shore Road that's gonna be important to discuss.
So completeness is there, it's just we're not approving the application, just
I would like to see the application for the stormwater, for the processing area maintenance building, um, at least submitted. You know, kinda like you did for the last one. I mean, that is something
Yeah.
We need to, I'd like to see that.
How soon can you have those submitted?
I can have that here by probably the middle of next week. I actually had asked Kyle to submit that, and he got in, he got crazy busy with something and was kinda late getting the plans in, and so it's just a matter, I just, he didn't, he didn't quite get to it, but we can, we were intending on doing it. And I could definitely get that here by the middle of next week.
How long do we need to uh, notify the town for public hearing?
Abouters, I need um, fourteen days. It wouldn't be till uh, January. I couldn't hold a public hearing till January fifth.
So my opinion is we could find it complete conditionally within the next week or so, you know, understanding we'll get the application. And schedule the public hearing.
Are we concerned about the uh, security and discussing the type of uh, security we're gonna receive? And we wanna get that nailed down now? Or you feel like comfortable with just saying six thousand dollars, but we're not sure what type of form it's gonna be in?
It's actually a discussion point for tonight. I don't think that's a completeness issue.
Okay. I think I think those were the biggest points, and traffic study, D E P, and
The updated drawings.
Right.
And then the ops plan, but they fixed that, so. Yeah? Do you want a motion? How do we do that? Do you want a motion that we find it complete?
Or do we wanna read through the conditions, right?
Yeah, I mean, essentially
What we would do before we found it complete.
There is, there wasn't a uh, conditional use checklist that I, that I had available uh, to review. So it's essentially up to the board to say, we have enough information and we're, we're gonna make this vote.
Well, it's we have a checklist. Oh, well, I mean, it's like one of the things right on the checklist. H, a stormwater drainage system capable of handling twenty-five year storm without adverse impact and adjacent problems has been designed. We don't have that yet. That's one of the, one of the conditions. I mean, if we go by this checklist for conditional use, so you just put it out there.
I had this page.
I think we, we really covered a lot of it.
Yeah, and I, I think the, the stormwater plan is a lot of permit by rule.
Well, I think we need a, a plan whether or not, you know, regardless, I wanna see a plan for fourteen acres of processing area. That's, that's a lot of open ground in the maintenance building with the, you know, fairly large roof and cement pad. I'd like to see those things.
So I, I, I won't put words in the applicant's mouth. This, the applicant should address this, but I, I think that in lieu of a full stormwater plan, a lot of the area is being handled by, you know, those kind of permit by rule. And the rest of the open excavation area is typically exempt from the chapter five hundred, which is the typical stormwater stuff. So I, that, I have not reviewed a stormwater plan with like pre and post and, you know, those kinds of things that we typically associate with a stormwater plan. Because uh, those areas like the wash plant and where the maintenance garage are, are subject to that P B R, which is much more simplified through the D E P.
Well, I'd still like to see what the plan is that the D E P approved.
A stormwater plan is typically for like, when you have a lot of impervious area. Is, am I correct in saying that?
Well, I think a, a lot of unvegetated area would also qualify, you know. That fourteen acre or the processing area, you know.
That area
What's the plan there?
That area will be, is designed right now to be internally drained, for sure.
Maybe that's in this plan set.
I think they had
Yeah, you can see all the contours. You can see the grade eight, like
Before, the before and after the processing area.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Matt, didn't you originally submit a stormwater? Didn't you guys submit something, not a plan, but something, or am I just thinking about another?
Have the erosion and sedimentation
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just don't have it in front of me. I just, for some reason, I thought you had something already.
Yes, spill plan, groundwater monitoring plan.
Well, I got the erosion and sedimentation control notes.
So I'm Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm gonna go back to uh, I'm referring to this electronic version of the August eleventh memo that I uh, had prepared based on uh, the applicant's July submissions. And uh, at that point, we were saying that the internally drained extraction areas are exempt from D E P stormwater requirements. And a D E P permit by rule must be obtained for the development of the maintenance building area. So I would not expect like that full set of calculations, um, and uh, changes in drainage patterns for, for this type of use.
For the processing area.
For a mineral extraction operation like this.
Well, the extraction areas, no, they never get done because it's internally draining.
Right.
I'm not really talking about those areas.
So I, I think what they've submitted
The processing area is fourteen acres and the building area in the front. Which
What are you saying, the building area needs one, right?
It needs permit by rule.
I feel like the processing area needs a permit by rule too. And we're just hoping the applicant will do
Yeah, we're, we're gonna submit one. That's the
Right.
Yeah.
The, the permit by rule, and again, I, I won't speak for the applicant, but the permit by rule submissions I've seen in the past are, include that one-page cover, the, the kind of thing that's included in this most recent submission. And then some general uh, location map, proof of, you know, right title and interests. Uh, the kinds of things that we would have available through the submission uh, and the plan set developed. So I, I, it may be beneficial for uh, you or Kyle to provide more than the cover letter, and just so that the board has an understanding of what goes with the permit by rule
Okay.
cover form. But um, I will say that, you know, there's nothing uh, extra that the D E P would be looking at for a permit by rule that, that board wouldn't have in front of them from past submissions or this submission.
True.
And, and you know, like, it's, permit by rule is essentially the like, um, again, we're, we're not gonna do a full review unless it's a tier one or meeting other thresholds. Permit by rule is essentially for the smaller, less impactful. And in this case, some very specific sections of this overall project area.
Yeah, I guess I just don't feel like the processing area and wash area is really that small in the area. I don't know, I'm kinda stuck on that a little bit, but I think we're doing pretty well overall.
I do have Carl Davis here with the land trust, and we are working on drafting um, a formal agreement right now that I will share with everybody when it's complete. But the operations manual talks about some provisions that the land trust, small provisions, like I want Carl and the land trust to put up um, perimeter flagging right on their, on their boundary, just saying keep out. Like um, there's some provisions in there about the right of way, um, saying that they can only take like, they can't take commercial vehicles down the right of way. They can only take, you know, pickup trucks. Um, and we should have that drafted, I'm hoping, within the next few weeks. And that is something that I wanna share with everybody here, so.
Some pickups have commercial tags on them.
No, that's true.
So what are you gonna do then?
What do you want for vehicles down there? You tell me.
Well, I don't know. You said not commercial vehicles, but some My truck's got a commercial plate on it.
Four wheels O L S.
Four wheels O L S. That, yeah, that could be, yeah, there you go.
But you know, you know what I'm saying, though?
Oh, yeah, true. I mean
If someone reads it or hears it, and then, hey, they say no commercial trucks, someone's driving by and says, oh, there's a commercial tag on a plate.
Yeah.
What the heck's going on?
Commercial vehicles are gonna have to go in there sometimes to maintain the right of way.
We go by tonnage, keep them under
To maintain the road.
It's all language and definition, you know.
I don't mind.
Nothing over five tons, you know.
Nothing over five tons. I like that. That's
Well, we just don't wanna preclude them from, you know, making a parking area or something. I mean, how does that work?
Uh, they, they can, they can do whatever they want on their own land, but it, you know
You just have to use a, a one-ton dump.
Yeah.
One-ton to bring everything in.
Right. Might be able to help you out with some gravel. Do you wanna go through the points of discussion that I highlighted? Or not?
We can, but I feel like I'd like to spend some time on the drawings that I just received tonight before I can give you a
Okay.
thorough conversation on every point, but we could do it if you want.
I think we're, we've pretty much actually touched on the majority of them. I mean, we do, I, I, we do need to sort out the letter of credit thing. Um, when I read the ordinance, I really, it, it seems to me that there are multiple forms of guarantee that are allowable per the ordinance. And I really think that cash is an unreasonable expectation. I know, I'm sure every other gravel pit in Acton, I, I, I'm not aware of one that's had to come in with cold, hard cash.
Oh, no, they do.
Really?
It just hasn't been as much in the past.
Oh.
The reclamation bond or fee or whatever you call it.
Yeah.
Security was a thousand dollars an acre till five years ago.
Wow.
You know?
You should have done it five years ago. See, so five
I should have.
Yeah, it's just changed a lot.
Yeah.
Too, you know, which has made it different.
What's good with a letter of credit is that if the town updates their requirements, it's easier, it's much easier for an operator to go and revise the letter of credit for, you know, more amount per acre. If the town says, we, you know, down the road says we want more, um, you can always adjust a letter of credit. It might be hard to somebody, get somebody to come in later and just give you a bunch more cash, you know. In Sanford, that's how it's worked. We, when, if they update the required amount, then we just go to the bank and update the letter of credit, and it's simple and it's easy.
Like when you said twelve thousand?
I don't know if the
I didn't say that, did I?
I don't know, I wanna go back and look.
So I, I'm hoping a letter of credit or performance guarantee will be acceptable. We will be bonded through both the town and the state. Cuz with the D E P, if you go over ten acres, you have to have a variance permit. And which means you have to be bonded for the full amount. All thirty-five acres have to be bonded with the state. So that's some extra peace of mind, I think, for the town, or it should be. And essentially, there'll be two letters of credit in place with both the local and, and state, so. Which I'm sure, I don't think you saw that for the, was it the solar farm you guys required cash for?
The town, yeah.
Yeah. But I bet they weren't bonded through the state.
No, they are.
They were bonded through the state?
Also, the farms are bonded with the state. It's the same thing for the decommissioning.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Just, yeah. Right.
But the state does a, a bond, not a cash, obviously.
Right. So I don't know, I just, I think uh, in the nature of being business friendly, that it, if the ordinance allows for a different form of performance guarantee, that, you know, we should be allowed to, to meet that requirement however it works best for us, so. Yeah. You know, there really wasn't much else that we talked about. One thing You know, there really wasn't much else that we talked about. One thing I was the, the stream. You know, you, everybody had requested 100-foot buffer. I was kinda hoping to stick with a 75-foot buffer on that stream, um... It's a large property, but like we kind, tried to describe, the gravel is really only in certain areas on this property, um... You know, if the gravel was everywhere, then I'd probably be trying to develop more than 90 acres on a 500-acre parcel, um... But this 90 acres is where we've identified that the material is located, um, so 25 feet might not sound like a lot, but it kind of is, um, and all the town rules, state rules say 75 feet is acceptable. Um, I think we just had one recommendation for 100 feet, which came from, remember Gavin?
Inland Fisheries and Wild.
Yeah. Um, and I'd personally like to stick with the 75 feet there, um... I don't think it's gonna have any sort of adverse impact on that stream, um... And it's just, we, we know that there's the material there that we need for our operation, so uh, that was kind of one other point of conversation that I wanted to have tonight, but I'm really, looking through these, I, I really think we've pretty much covered everything else, so...
This plane that we've got up there has a hundred on it right there.
It does.
And you agreed to 100 last time.
I know, but I kinda, I kinda thought about it more. It's where, I mean, I'm getting greedy.
Yeah.
You want us to get greedy, but...
I want 25 feet.
About 125 feet?
No, I want...
Oh, yeah.
See, we can play the betting war.
Well, it's, you can see the extent of the stress area number two.
Why do you think they were the only ones?
They're very conservative. Yeah.
Are you sure?
I mean, this, the DEP is 75 feet. Every town I've worked with is 75 feet.
That also, that stream also runs into a lake eventually, somewhere along the lines it runs into a lake.
Yeah.
Then attacks, you have fish, you have aquatic life, insects that go into lakes.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that's why they're saying it? I mean, you have a good, great brown trout population in where that runs into.
Yeah, that's true.
And trout are very sensitive to changes, water temperature,
Yeah.
and stuff coming into the lakes.
I agree. But I think we're giving a lot too. I mean, we're giving up, we're donating 90, 93 acres, that's all gonna be preserved, and we're, we're donating a lot of land that the water heads into this stream from. That land's gonna be protected forever, you know?
But you also gotta remember, you need to protect the lakes too.
I agree. I think we're doing a lot to protect the lakes right here.
Well, that's 25 feet when you're trying to protect the lake.
I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna make a difference for the lake.
You say 25 feet doesn't make a difference, but where I was just pointing up on the stream, you're, you have a 25-foot buffer with the, the swamp that's adjacent to the stream right there.
Which swamp?
I, I was just indicating this. Yeah, uh, in right here. This swamp that's adjacent or connected to the stream, and your depth of buffer here, and it's just, just an example of where 25 feet could do a lot.
That, that shadowed area right there, with the hash marks? Area? Yeah. Okay, we are a little close right there.
It just, you know, and like in, like the extraction area number one, I believe, and you have the
You want me to...
pond in there.
You want me to adjust that extraction area right there, so we're a little further away from that and as a trade-off?
Well, I think just, I thought everyone agreed on 100 last time.
Yeah.
I, I feel like the board is still at 100.
Extraction, but you want to adjust the 25 feet. What's the difference?
I was just, yeah.
Just keep the 100 feet.
The material is a lot, is better. That, I mean, it's just...
You're digging next to a stream. Of course it's gonna be better.
Right, but you're still 75 feet away?
The stream feeds into a, a major lake.
It's also the topography, I think we were looking at, Matt. It's really, you know, it's very steep there.
Yeah. All right.
Stay away from...
All right.
You can't fight us on that.
Next try. No, I tried. Oh, I thought I'd try. We'll leave it at 100 feet.
Give it a little, but we can all...
As Gavin would say, "It doesn't hurt to ask."
Well, I have no other points of contention. I wanna figure out the letter of credit. Um, I think we hopefully agree on that roadway that goes over to extraction area number one. I don't really think there's a good place to move it, and I think if we can just improve what's there, that that's gonna have the least amount of, you know, consequential consequence, um... We did make a big effort to move the other roadway outside of the RP area, and I can tell you it's gonna be a lot harder to construct where we moved it, um... Where we moved it, it's it's not a logging road that's existent. It's gonna have to be something that we cut through the woods, um... And it's gonna be a little bit more challenging, but we shifted that whole thing right outside of the RP zone, um... You know, overall, across a 500-acre site, I, I think that the environmental impact that we're looking at is pretty minimal. We've got, you know, our 125% or 25% vernal pool, um, buffer infringement in, in area number one, and we've got kinda one roadway that goes through this RP area, and other than that, you know, we're not... I, I, I don't see us really causing a lot of harm, so...
Yeah, just while you're on the shaded brown area at the bottom there, I thought it was 25% of the distance between 100 and 250 feet. 'Cause it looks like you're, you're right up to the vernal pool on the, on the upper of the two. Yeah, right there. I thought it was 25% of the distance, 100 to 250. No, it's 25% where you could go right to the pool.
I think it's 25% of the vernal pool.
Yeah, I think it's just 25% of the area. I don't think there's a limitation, yeah.
I think that's what I remember here. Not, just don't quote me, 'cause but I think that's what I remember them saying.
Right.
Yeah, it's 25% of the, the actual whole area.
Essentially would...
You think you at least have the 25-foot buffer that we were talking about for any swamp or wetland.
Yeah.
Minimally right there, you know? I'd like to see that at least 25 feet away from the vernal pool itself when you're... You know, 'cause that's something that when you apply for this, uh, DEP variance, 25%, whatever you call it, they might look at that and say, "We'd like it if you were X number of feet away from it," you know, and we don't really know what they're gonna say. But it only kinda makes sense to me. Here we have how many vernal pools on the property, and then only two of them were considered significant within your region. I think we should probably, of excavation, I think we should probably try to protect ours, you know, as much as we can.
I mean, the state, this, the state
Think you'd have it 25 feet, I mean.
Right. But the point with the vernal pool is that the animals are supposed to be able to have a path to get into the vernal pool and get out. They don't, they don't permanently habitat there. They spawn there, and then they leave. It's...
Right, but Joseph, you know, what your direct impact on the resource itself is.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause that'll, you know, could affect the, you know, like in this instance, just to, you know, increase sunlight to the pool, you know, when you're right up to it like that.
If you wanna increase some of the buffer on that pool, I can, I can do that. I don't think that'd be a big change.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to have some sort of minimal protection, even if you're heating up that 25%. 'Cause I, I mean, I don't, I don't know what that distance is right now, but it's less than 25 feet.
Looks like it's at least 10 feet.
Yeah, that's, it's probably around 10 feet as, as part of it there. Oh, give it some thought. I mean, I think that would be a...
That, that'd be a pretty...
Didn't realize it was gonna be right up to the thing.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna push that off a little bit, that's not a big deal.
I was just looking for the list of contentious issues, but I guess it's in this somewhere.
Yeah, it's in the cover letter.
It's on the last page, isn't it?
Matt? What's that?
I got a question.
Yep.
Truck traffic on 2.3?
Section 2.3? Is that in, in the operations manual?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Number three?
Will not have any traffic on the site the Saturday of Labor Day and Memorial Day.
Right.
Yes.
What about the other days of the week? Uh, the other Saturdays between Memorial Day and Labor Day?
Like, Saturdays all summer long?
Yeah, we have another, we have another pit that we don't allow, because remember we discussed it with the dump?
Yep.
'Cause that road backs up. I mean, it's...
Is it a mess all summer? Yeah.
Pretty much.
Okay.
That's why we kinda did that with the other one, another pit that we just, you know, passed, but you know, and here it's just saying Saturday of Labor Day weekend and Memorial Day weekend. But we have that other pit that we just approved. In fairness, we didn't allow it because of the traffic of backing up on a Saturday. And if you're coming through with a truck, or the trucks, cars are trying to get up, it's not gonna work.
Yeah.
Make it really unsafe.
I agree with that. I think no Saturdays between that, that time period.
From, from Memorial Day to Labor Day?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
It should read more like...
Yeah, the way it's worded is...
Any traffic travel on Saturdays between the Labor Day weekend and Memorial Day weekend.
Was that what you had originally intended on?
Yes.
Okay.
But, yeah.
That's what...
Yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah, just, I think you might've missed it, 'cause it was stated somewhere else in my mass confusion of pileup papers.
Yeah, in that case, I just misinterpreted that, then I will change that.
Okay, thank you. And it's just, honestly, it's just the amount of backup traffic. I've seen it back up down into that gully on the lower part of the and people are parked on one side, people are parked on the other, and then you gotta try to squeeze through to get... It's not a good time.
No.
You could change that real easy just by, "Any traffic travel to the site on Saturday between Labor Day weekend and Memorial Day weekend." Couple of words.
You, you got the lake community and, you know, I...
Well, I think that a lot of it's lake stuff. I mean, it doesn't happen in the winter.
Oh, yeah.
You know, unless it's...
Well, the population just triples in the summer, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you have people, like, you got people biking on the road, I'm sure, and just other recreational activity happening on weekends in the summer. Yeah.
Sometimes a big one.
Jason's out there running 20 miles and...
Yeah, that's a good, that's a, that's a good hill to run.
That is a good hill.
Seems our population goes from 2,400 to 10,000 during those days.
What one from, what one?
In the summertime.
Oh, really?
Our population.
Is that, is that, oh, really? 2,400?
Close.
Wow.
Unreal.
99% of people here are from out of state, come here during the summer.
Wow.
In this area, so... Yeah.
Wait.
I have another quirky thing. I'm trying to find it.
Yep.
It's not settling in my older brain. But, like, give me a minute.
Yeah.
The good side of things, I thought, is report. This was well done. I hope we can get one just like it for the other row.
Well, that's, that's who did, she's gonna do the same thing.
She's just a job on that.
Yeah, she did. I, I've used her in the past, and she's always really impressed me. She's, yeah.
Got all the facts and all the history.
Yeah, yeah.
Some town needs it.
Very thorough, the, yeah.
I mean, we used to have this ordinance in a little town. I was going up, it was an intersection, and until they had so many deaths, they wouldn't put it in traffic light. He says, "Well, the purpose of putting in traffic light is to avoid having those deaths."
Yeah, right.
But the state regulations were, you had to have so many fatalities at that intersection to mourn the cost of a life.
So, where is the board at right now?
Um, I think we should finish going through the further discussion, hard items. We almost got through all of them. I think I've pretty much talked about it.
Number four on the last page.
Yep.
The wording, I'm having a disconnect with my brain and the wording. Provide a stop sign at the intersection of all trailheads. Provide a note of Three Rivers Land Trust Trail that the trail location may be moved by the operator or discontinued at any time. And it also stays the same with the snowmobile trail. Who's the operator?
The operator is the owner...
Them.
Uh, is us. Yeah, we'd be the operator.
And discontinued means you can take that away? That's how...
Yeah, as a private landowner, I mean, we're not, our intention is to allow the snowmobiles to use trails going through our property and allow Three Rivers Land Trust to have a trail through our property up to the North Country land that's, you know, a red gate road, I should say, um... But if we, we do reserve the right to discontinue those trails if we have issues, like if we have problems with snowmobiles coming in and vandalizing our equipment, or if we have problems with people who are hiking on site and they're walking around in the mining facility, I don't think that it would get to that, but, you know, as landowners, we have a right to discontinue trails on our property. Um, and I just think that that does need to be clear, um... I fully intend on allowing the snowmobiles to go through. I grew up snowmobiling. I know how important these trails are, um... And I also really wanna see Three Rivers Land Trust be able to connect this property to the Hanson Pond Preserve um, in time, which I think is their goal. Um, and I think we're gonna be able to make it, to make it work, but I just don't want there to be something here that somebody interprets later as, "Okay, part of your approval was that you ha, you know, these trails that are shown on these plans, like, you know, you agreed to that." Like, that's here, like, I just...
Disconnect, because earlier the state papers they handed to us, that's how it was worded.
I do agree to all of that, but I need to reserve the right to discontinue those trails if we need to discontinue them. Um, I have no intention of doing that. We've already spoken with the Snowmobile Association, um, and I really don't foresee any problems, but it's, I just don't want someone to come back and look at this years later and say, "You can't, you know, you can't move that trail. You can't, you can't do this, you can't do that," because it's, they think it's written in stone here, you know?
I think it makes sense.
Especially need to be able to move the trails.
I think it makes sense legally. If people are vandalizing or, or trespassing and getting hurt, then you should, legally, I think it...
Well, no, and I understand that, but the way it was worded in the previous things was, you're giving this land, then if you're giving this land to me, you're giving me land. I can do whatever I wanna.
Oh, I'm, Three Rivers Land Trust can make as many trails as they want on their own land. They, they have 93 acres, and they're gonna make, I'm sure, a trail system, and I, like I told you guys, there's an awesome picnic area up there with a great view of the lake. They can do whatever they want with their parcel. I'm just talking about the trail that would...
Cuts through your...
Cuts through our gravel pit to bring them up to North Country Road, um... It's 100% gonna be at their own discretion what they wanna do on their property.
In other words, behave yourself or we'll cut her off.
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah, I gotta say, Carl...
If they're abusing it, then...
Yeah.
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 I was just having a little senior-type older moment in there. Not as old as some of these people here, but...
I really love, I really love snowmobiling and ATVing myself, and we were pretty bummed out in Sanford. I don't know if you saw, they
Oh, yeah.
completely outlawed anyone from using the trails anymore. It was a real...
Except for snowmobiles.
Except for snowmobiles, yeah.
Oh, they're going back on that one right now, though. There's another boat.
Well, snowmobiles actually...
That's Sanford not acting.
What?
That's Sanford not acting. Let's deal with this.
I know. But...
That was my only clue. Looks like number six is probably the last one on your, um, Looks like number six is probably the last one on your, um, further discussion list. Offsite materials?
Yes.
You covered everything else, didn't you? And I see you have changed your operations manual in terms of offsite material, section 2.4, to exclude, um, concrete with rebar.
Correct.
But at our last discussion, um, we had restricted it a little bit further than that. And that you wouldn't be bringing in asphalt or concrete with rebar. And that, we kind of based that on, um, page 54 of the ordinance under performance standards, that no equipment, debris, junk, or other material shall be permitted on extraction site except those directly related to active extraction operations. And that's kind of how we came up with the concrete. You're making concrete from the material on the site. So bringing some of that spent material back or bringing concrete back, you're, it's the same material that was on the site. So I feel like that's kind, you know, that seems fair to do. But to bring in materials completely unrelated to your business or to the site didn't make sense, and we kind of did form an agreement at that time about it.
I, I think that it's doing a service to this community to have a place where they can bring concrete, like, you know...
I don't have any problem with you bringing concrete in there.
Yeah, and asphalt.
I think it was Jason's suggestion that it was just the stuff from your operation, which made perfect sense to me. But if you wanted to bring out, to bring some concrete from other locations, I think that would work.
Okay.
Personally, because it is pretty much the same constituents that you're taking out of there.
I think it's a better idea than it being dumped at the landfill.
Yeah.
It's the only other spot that's going.
I'd agree with that. It can be recycled and, yeah.
You can put that concrete to use.
Right.
It's, at least gets recycled instead of just buried.
Yeah.
We, we make crushed concrete right now and people love it. I mean, it's a great product for driveways and...
Stone dust is great.
Stone dust, yeah.
I have that in my driveway. It's good stuff.
So, pretty much, um, all I would ask you to do is, um, pretty much the same thing we agreed on last time, which was just to, um, strike asphalt from that list of imported materials.
What's the issue with asphalt? Just wanna know.
Well, pretty much, um, water pollution. And I do have a sheet here that I handed out to everyone detailing all these different types of contaminants that are found in asphalt.
Okay.
But it's also not a material that has anything to do with your operation, which is number seven, page 54. No, or other material shall be permitted on extraction site except for those directly related to active extraction operations. And that's why I feel like the concrete is related. I mean, a lot of materi-, you know, the stone came out of there.
Yeah.
But the asphalt really is unrelated.
Okay.
I do have this sheet here, if you're interested, that kind of spells out all the different contaminants that are in asphalt that can leach into the groundwater. And you are in a very sensitive area where you got the aquifer protection districts right there, and then on the other side, you're right next to, you know...
Right.
Couple dozen varnished pools. Um, I feel like it is a sensitive area.
Okay.
And, I don't know, I...
I'm in a gray mail with them with my research too, that you don't know what contamin-, I mean, the roads get certain contaminants, parking areas get different stuff. You know, even though the asphalt itself may not be a contaminant, but the oils and stuff that is absorbed by it is. And that's an unknown until you actually test it.
Okay.
I mean, if you were allowed to do it, it would be stringent testing going on all the time as to its content, you know, but...
Right, and when... Yeah, I, I really, oh, yeah.
It does.
Well, it's made out of petroleum products.
I agree, I agree. I can remove that. I mean...
That would be great. I mean, I feel like...
Cause, I mean, most time, people, they mill up a road, they take the asphalt to a plant, an asphalt plant, and they actually recycle it. And it just goes right back through that incinerator, you know? So, let's leave it at that. Yeah. So that was the last point of discussion.
Oh, on your list anyway.
My list. On my list.
If anybody has anything else, but I think that's probably other points of discussion we can do at future meetings too, if we find, you know... I still have to go over all the information.
Did you get my message earlier this week?
I got your message, I was just didn't have time to meet it.
No, I get it.
And a day and a half, I don't know if I would have time to get to it anyway. Do we want to read the, read through the standards?
And we're talking about the standards of 6634, right?
Yes, that's what I'm looking at.
So, and we're not voting on the project. We're not saying that it meets the standards. It's, this would be for finding completeness related to...
Does that make sense to you, or?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure we're not jumping too far ahead.
No, no. No, I feel like we still have a lot of information to review that we haven't seen yet too, so I wouldn't want to get too far ahead, but, um, I think it, all right, I can read through these standards if, shouldn't take too long. Uh, okay, so, "The use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat." Yeah, it will not. Well, I think it will have an adverse impact, but if we can, if he does these specific things to mitigate, um, his impact, that's the best we can do. And there's no way to say that it's not gonna have an adverse impact. But if you're, you know, if you have a good revegetation plan, um, you know, we, we... All the things we've gone through, um... I feel like, you know, you are, you know, protecting a fair amount of the habitat. I don't know, it's, it's always a difficult one, but...
So I, I think, just to clarify, you're saying, you're basically asking the question, have they submitted information that the board is gonna be able to make this determination? You're not saying it will not have an adverse impact at this point. It's like, yes, we have some information related to that, and we can move forward with a more substantive review.
Right.
Eric?
Okay, B, the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Yes, and that was, right, I guess we don't have to get too, too specific now.
These, these are performance standards, and, and they're framed as a question, like, basically a statement that says that this is gonna meet the standards of the ordinance. That's, that what this checklist is for.
Right, and then generally we say how it meets the standards.
When we get to that point, yes.
Exactly, okay, all right. D, traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance. Traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in the ordinance. Yes, it's been addressed. Are we done discussing it? Probably not. The site is, E, the site design is conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. I don't think it's in a flood zone.
It's not.
F, adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. G, adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made? Yes.
Plan addresses.
H, stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. And so if you, you're going to apply to DEP for that, to get a permit for the processing area.
Yes, and I should have those over to you.
In the building.
In the maintenance building. Have you already done the maintenance building?
No, I haven't done the maintenance building or the, um, washing, processing area. Yeah.
Okay. I, adequate provision to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made.
As a plan.
Yeah, we've got, we've got some in here we're yet to thoroughly review. J, there's adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use it for fire protection purposes. You got the two wells on there now. K, the provisions of, for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like. Yes. All performance standards in the ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. We certainly, we've certainly addressed all of them and discussed them, and, um, it's likely...
They've submitted the information for us to be able to make that determination.
Yeah. Archaeological, M, archaeological and historic resources as dizzy in the comprehensive plan will be protected.
Yeah, they addressed them. Yeah, we should go to 332.
Yeah. Okay. 6.6.3.3, application procedure, signed application has been submitted, yes. Plans presented for approval are drawn to scale, no smaller than one each equals 50 feet.
Certainly.
More than once.
Following information has been provided. The name and address of the applicant. The name of the proposed development. Copy of the deed. Professor's math and law number. Total floor area of proposed buildings. Ground coverage. Location of each proposed building structure or addition. And the date certified perimeter survey of the parcel showing reference points showing through north. Point graphic scale, total acreage. Required fees have been collected. Independent consultants have been engaged if necessary to ensure compliance with all requirements of this ordinance. All right, so I would say, let's see. I would, uh, make a motion that we find the mineral extraction application for west, west shore, for H Road 227 West Shore Drive and 22103.
Two lots.
Yeah. I find it complete, and I, uh...
We have it.
We move, move to, uh, schedule a public hearing on, uh, January 5th. Second.
All in favor? Yeah, see, you missed it.
What?
We don't do reviews either. You have to watch the video.
I got a witness.
No, Kyle was, he was looking out the window.
Oh, I gotta come back in a month, yeah.
He waited for this moment and he blew it. And we'll just have to keep you along.
Can I call my dad and put him on speakerphone so you can tell him?
No, you can tell him.
No, he's probably pacing back and forth.
Yeah, he is right now.
He's sweating. It's good for his exes.
And his sweaty tights.
He's gotta wait another week for the movie.
So January 5th?
January 5th.
All right. Um, if I send in some revised materials before then, is there, you guys want them in a few weeks before?
You can give it to me before, um, December 15th. Uh, that would be appreciated, so then I can give it to the board, because it's hard. We have, uh, working volunteers on the planning board, so to get people here to pick up information sometimes is not the best thing, so. If I could have it before the next meeting.
That'd be great.
I'll get the PBRs.
Oh, yeah.
So the two PBRs?
Yes.
Provision to the transportation plan?
Yep. You want me to read you my, want me to read you my, my bullet points?
There were four.
All right. Get the info that Stan Tech sent to the DEP.
Yeah, and the SDP, that was the fourth.
Notify, put something in the operations manual that notifies the CEO when you're dredging the ponds. Some notes about the, um, 6 to 6:30, what's going on during that timeframe. No excavators till 7:00. Clarify that up better. Gotta finish the traffic study, PBRs. Possibly see if I can find some supplemental information that was sent as part of, as part of the PBR applications. Especially probably for the wash area for you.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd still like to see some sort of plan, but I, I'm gonna review what you have here first and see if it's something we could just add something onto this, or if you, maybe it's already pretty sufficient what's in there with the top of them, so...
Yeah, that is pretty, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'll see what Kyle submitted and if he can give you... I'm gonna limit Carl to only five tons on the right of way. I'm gonna change it, no Saturdays from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and get rid of asphalt. Those are my notes.
Even 100-foot buffer on the street.
And keep the 100 feet.
Keep the buffer.
Thank you.
I didn't write anything, so that's all right. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. Old business done, sending projects, Steve Hebert, 55 Red Gate Lane.
Public hearing on the 15th.
Hearing on, thanks.
I just wanted to finish your words for you.
Right.
I know.
For the, um...
You were trying to read my mind.
Boat, storage area.
Trust me, sometimes I don't want to do this.
Didn't you have to revise?
Dangerous.
We wanted to get the, um, shoreline zoning on the drawing. There's a couple of the small things, I think.
Yeah, the drawing had to be updated. He was gonna try and do it himself.
Right, he's gonna get the signature draw, and there's something I have. Anything else for next time, other than the hearing?
Um, I have a greatest practical extent on a lot that, um, it's one of those ones you can't do anything with again. They have a new foundation on half the building and an old foundation on the other, and it's kind of pulling the house, so they gotta get a foundation under the other house. Other part of the house. I can show you the lot right now. There is absolutely nowhere this place is going.
Yeah, yeah.
But they have to, for that purpose, they have to come in anyway, because they're putting, they're, I believe they're about 50 something feet off the water on the other side of the road. They're on a back lot, but still within the short, within the 100-foot buffer.
Yeah.
So, um, that's, that's the only other thing I have, so the public hearing and, and that.
And it's likely we'll, um... Approve the boat facility.
If the planning board feels that it meets standards.
Cause we didn't have any outstanding...
No.
Issues really of them fitting into the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, and I, me and Ben had discussion about that, and then I told you how we went over that.
Right. Right?
Oh, I just assigned the paperwork for camp.
Yeah, they're gonna bring, uh, he, he's not even coming himself. He's gonna, pretty much sounds like he's gonna send the maps down to me. So... Nice, easy, hopefully easy meeting.
We're gonna have a Christmas party after.
I move with your drone.
I'll say.
Thank you.